Let's bring the study session in Des Moines City Council to order. And Susan Steens, how you have the flag in front of you, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present. I'd like to give a heads up announcement that after we have comments from the public, the council must go into at least a 30-minute executive session to discuss litigation in which the city will potentially be involved. Again, at this time, we welcome comments from the public. Please limit your comments to those items that are on tonight's agenda because it's a study session. Did anyone sign up?
No, Your Honor.
Well, I went through all of that for nothing, didn't I? Well, at this time, then, I'm going to ask the council to go into an executive session for approximately 30 minutes.
To discuss litigation.
Okay. Let's go ahead and continue with the study session. The first item on our agenda this evening is the Parks Master Plan. Patrice, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Patrice Thorell. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. And tonight's, the purpose of this discussion is to transmit to you the draft 2010 Des Moines Parks Recreation and Senior Services Master Plan. And this is a preliminary review. I'd also like to, at this time, acknowledge some great citizens who were appointed by City Council about a year ago, a little over a year ago, actually. And that is our Parks and Recreation Senior Services Master Plan Citizens Committee. And we have a number of individuals here tonight, and I would like to introduce them. John Rosenlund is right here. Could you just stand as I introduce you, please? And John Rosenlund is going to speak with you for a couple of minutes this evening as well. And then I'd like to introduce Nadine Byers, Nadine, Barbara McMichael, Barbara, Jim Palhemos, and Jay Roberts. And these fabulous people have been working with us for the past year and have attended 10-plus meetings at three-plus hours each. And you can just imagine, plus all the homework and site visits, so you can imagine all of the time that they've invested in this process. So I really appreciate that. I'd also like to introduce Susan Black, and she is our landscape architect that worked with us as a consultant, helping to assess our facilities. And she's with Susan Black and Associates. And I thank you for coming this night, tonight, as well. So quickly, why is the Parks and Recreation and Services Master Plan important? Well, it's part of a mandatory requirement to achieve GMA requirements. And it's also required because to achieve grants through state agencies such as CTED Grants, the RCO Recreation Conservation Funding Board Grants, and other transportation grants, we have to have a master plan in place. And CTED uses the RCO Recreation Conservation Office's criteria as a criteria for qualification for state grants. In the past six years since the last master plan process, we have received over $3 million in grants from the state. And so, as you can see, this is a real important element of our capital plan, and it provides much-needed matching dollars for us. RCO-required elements are, we have, the plan has to have goals and objectives, inventory, public involvement is a real key part of the planning process. We look at demand analysis. We have to have a capital improvement plan, a six-year capital improvement program, just like the cities. And then, of course, the plan has to be adopted by council through ordinance or resolution. Public involvement, as I mentioned, is really key to the planning process. And the criteria required that we need met a number of items. As you know, the council's appointment of the master plan committee was a key element of that. We also were required to do some type of survey work, and we did accomplish three master plan surveys, one to the citizens, one to the business groups, and one to our user groups. And so, those have all been achieved, and they're in your master plan, they're Appendix B. We also have a public hearing process that we go through. One is with our planning agency, and that will actually take place on July 13th. And then, we do need to come back to council before this year's 2009 Des Moines Comprehensive Plan amendments are approved and get council adoption of this plan so that a piece of this plan can be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan update. And that's really important because we have a number of outstanding RCO grants right now, RCO and also state heritage capital grant funds. We've got over $1 million worth of money, oh, $2 million worth of money, sitting out there that we want to, that we're going, we've got projects ready to construct, and we need to recapture those funds. So now, it's my pleasure to bring John Rosenlund up, and he's going to give a few words about the committee process.
Hi. Good evening. I was elected spokesperson for the committee, and it's a pleasure to be here. As we start getting into more numbers and things, we thought it would be a good thing here to kind of just give you a little background here on what we did and some of the things that we were looking at and going through here. And the first thing I want to make sure everybody understands is the committee understands that any of the recommendations we make are advisory, and obviously are dependent upon funding being available, and lots of, there are a lot of logistical considerations. And we understand that a portion, or probably a good portion, of the items we have listed, and you'll see later, will probably never be funded. But the problem is, if we don't get them down on the master plan, they can never be considered. So we want to make sure that that was the first thing we brought up, so everybody understands that's how we put this together, or put these recommendations together. Okay. The other thing is, in updating Sections 3 and 5, which you'll be looking at later, we reviewed all the priority projects, funding plans, and where appropriate, not only prioritize, or we prioritized by number system, which we'll show a little later here, you know, that was based on the committee investigation and recommendations of the known issues we had. I was talking about, you know, why is the master plan important? Is that important? Patrice kind of covered it, but obviously, it's very important because without it, the city cannot qualify for a lot of money that's available. So it's a very important part of the process. Also, as Patrice said, we began about a year ago, been having a lot of meetings, and our main goal is to reassess the 2003 plan and identify the changing economic and environmental pressures that have happened since then, so we could prioritize and submit some reasonable recommendations to the council. Just real briefly, in order to, you know, to perform this task, what we had to do, obviously, review the 2003 master plan so we can understand what it was, and determine the significant changes that would be needed to implement in the, in the 2010 plan. So what we did, obviously, is members visited all of the parks, right-of-ways, all the open spaces that you're going to be reading about here a little later. We talked about also about the surveys, which were sent and analyzed and reviewed. Reviewed the 2009 capital improvement plan, along with the stated needs, legal issue standards, and the levels of service, which are already established that we'll have to comply with. And along with the assistance of Susan Black and Associates, we analyzed all this information and prioritized it on a 1, 2, 3 system, which you'll see a little later. So rather than just putting it down, we also put a number next to it with the importance we felt based on the, based on the issues. And then, obviously, all of these resulted in the changes you'll see in Sections 3 and 5 of the master plan. Real quickly, just a few committee observations. You'll have your own, but obviously, what we, let's kind of, and when you're going through this, you'll see, that certain areas of the city have insufficient park and open space per the Des Moines Park and Recreation Standards, which is 8.5 acres per thousand population. We also found that we need to sustain the level of parks that we have and increase those in the areas that are underserved. Need to make sure that we have adequate funds, adequate funds are needed and necessary for the maintenance and upkeep of the existing parks and open spaces we have. And the important thing here, all future projects, that they be reviewed with sustainability of design, construction, and maintenance. And you'll see that in Section 5 in the chapters 602, 9, and 10. Just to wrap up, the committee, we appreciate the opportunity to have been involved in this process, and would ask the council, when appropriate and possible, that they look at these recommendations carefully. And we understand there are a lot of needs in the city, and that these parks and open spaces are permanent and enjoyed by all, and they'll last a lifetime with proper funding and oversight. Thank you.
I want to take you through the master plan real briefly, and just make sure that you understand what section, what the sections are, where to look for materials. We're not going to get deep into discussion tonight about it, but I just want to make sure that you're aware of what the plan is and where to find information that you might be looking for. And also, just to give you the, the mission of the City of Des Moines Parks and Recreation Department is to provide recreation opportunities and encourage the diverse population of the Des Moines area to participate in life-enhancing activities through developed and well-maintained parkland and facilities, professional programming and services, and the optimum use of community resources. And our department takes that very, very seriously. We really believe and live this mission statement. And I just want to make sure that you're aware of, of what it is. The first section of the master plan has all the tables of contents and acknowledgements, and it also has a real brief overview, executive summary of the plan, which really gives you a feeling of what is in the plan. Section 1 gives you an overview of the existing conditions. And there is a lot of data in this master plan. There's a lot of work that went into updating it. There's information regarding our existing facilities. There's changes in the amount of park acres, and you'll see there's changes in the listing of parks in our community. We've grown about 40 acres or so since the last master plan. There are also summaries of our school resources, county parks, other private recreation resources. There's information about the community's demographics. Some of it goes back to the 2000 census, but most of it has been updated because of some updates that we've been able to find. There's also a list of the master plan capital project status. It gives you an overview of all of the projects that were, that were in the 2003 master plan, and it gives you an idea of where those projects, what their status is today, whether it be completed, or no action, or canceled, or underway. There are also, there's also information about the current levels of service, how many acres that we have, how many acres are required based on our current level of service. And then, it also gives you an overview, we've included our current planning activity, which is our current CIP. There's also maps that include the park types that we currently have. There's a map of our current municipal capital improvement plan, 2009 through 2014, and also a map of our pedestrian bicycle facilities. So there's a lot of information in here to cover. Under Section 2, Needs Assessment, this is where we look at all of the factors relating to recreation demand in the community. And we surveyed our citizens, businesses, and user groups. We, we, we need to know what are their preferences and needs for recreation in the next decade. That's part of the main reason for doing this plan. The survey outcomes, as I mentioned earlier, are going to be in Appendix B. I think you have that in the back of your, your book. And the current status of the ratio of park acres per thousand population, we have kind of a two-layered rate, but the rate that's, that is in the current comprehensive plan is 8.5, and has been for many, many years, the past few decades, is 8.5 acres per thousand population. What that is made up of is recreation resources that can be used by the population, whether they be active parks or conservancy parks. What was not intended to be in that 8.5 acres per thousand population ratio is our acres that are, are open space, that are, that are conservancy, that cannot be developed for recreation purposes, like buffers, or steep hills, those types of things. I've also included in this assessment, you see a table, there will be a table that you'll see in a few minutes, that shows you each of the populations by service area, and it shows you how many acres per service area are developed, how many acres are conservancy with some type of a recreation resource, how many are undeveloped with no recreation resources. And then, it'll get, tell you if, per area, if the, if the acres are below or above the standard. And then, it gives you a listing of what the proposed master plan acres would be for that area based on the acquisition plan that you'll see later in the master plan. Section 2 also includes all of the park classification standards. You know, there's, there are different types of parks. There's mini parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, and sports complexes. There's a regional park, there's special-use parks, like a marina or a golf course. Conservancy parks are those open spaces. The Des Moines Creek Park is a conservancy park with a trail. And then, there's trails, pathways, and right-of-ways, and streetscapes, and entryways. And so, a lot of those are not really parks, they're just landscaped areas, not really usable for recreation. And then, what you'll see at the end of Section 2 is essentially, it identifies the work that was done just recently with the Des Moines Comprehensive Transportation Plan. There was a chapter in the plan that relates to on-street bikeway network. It really ties into what we're doing with our off-street trail networks. And so, I've included a table of their recommended bikeway, bikeway network projects for the future, because I think that's really important to be noted in this master plan. And then, the illustration in the back includes age groups by neighborhood. So you can see graphically what age groups of, of citizens live in each of the neighborhoods throughout the community. And that does impact where we would want to develop different types of resources. Section 3, Facilities and Operations Objectives, is where we're going to get in our priority 1, 2s, and 3s. There are tables that, it's more than a table. There was a lot of time, blood, sweat, and tears that went into creating these tables. There's a table, Table 3-1 on parkland acquisition. There's a Table 3-2 inter-local parkland acquisition. Table 3-3 is our biggest table, and that's Facilities Renovation Repair Plan. That's a biggie. And then, there's an inter-local Facilities Renovation and Repair Plan, Table 3-4. And then, there's an extensive list of facilities development as well. Now, facilities development isn't new stuff necessarily. Facilities development is expanding or enhancing what we already have. There's only a couple of new projects in there, and those are by developers, and also the proposed replacement of Zenith Park, if we lose that facility because of a school being built at that location. And then, there's an inter-local Facilities Development Projects Plan, which includes other resources like aquatics facility, and et cetera. And then, we added something new this year. We had it last year, but not quite as extensive as this. Table 3-7 is a summary of maintenance projects and equipment that are needed to sustain the existing facilities and any new development. So it gives you a really good idea of the full package of items that we're looking at. Oops, sorry. There's also some information behind that regarding our recreation programs. Again, we have extensive recreation and senior services programs, and it also gives information regarding park operations and maintenance standards. Section 4 gives you an overview of how we came to, or how we would find comparative land values, maintenance impact projections if we do develop facilities. And then, there's costs per square foot for development. It gives an overview of our existing budget, and actually, it's pretty interesting, our budget really hasn't, has grown about 10% over the past decade, which hasn't, not grown a lot. But the programs and the facilities have grown extensively. And then, there's a lot of information regarding funding programs, everything from concessions to public-private partnerships, where we would look for grants at the local, county, and state level, and then the types of voted and/or other types of funding initiatives that could take place.
Dan?
Regarding the projects, I see your total master plan priorities, projects, and this is over 20 years. The good news-
Where are you looking, Dan?
On page, Illustration 4.1.
Okay. And let me, let me make sure everybody knows where they're looking for that. Illustration 4.1, if you look at your green tab 4, it's the final section. It's about four or five pages. Yeah, it's more than that.
Okay.
And it goes through each of the tables, however, it has a corresponding budget element that goes along with it.
Okay. One question I have is, on the next page, under Master Plan Maintenance Projects and Equipment, is that included in the total master plan priorities, or is that an additional amount? And if so, why is it listed separately? So if you look, you've got the, after the purple-
Yeah.
-section, you've got a yellow section.
Okay, okay. How, let me tell you how it's split out. It's split out per area. We've got Acquisition, and then, we go into Renovation and Repair, and those are totaled up. And they're all identified by Priority 1, 2, or 3. So you'll see Priority 1, 2, 3. Actually, you'll see Priority 1A, 1B, 2, 3, and then, All. And so, each-
Those are explained in the area.
Each area is prioritized, and there's a separate section for that. Now, there is a section that totals up the capital-
Mm-hmm.
-and the total capital of all. If we were to do everything on the master plan, from 1 to 3, is about $47 million. And then, if we were to do all the maintenance projects, priorities 1 to 3, were about $1.3 million worth of projects.
So the total, then, is about $48-
Yes.
...million dollars. So the good, the, the good news is, it's only $48 million for 20 years compared to the transportation budget, which is $100 million.
There we go. There's some good news here. That's great news. Thank you.
The bad news is that it's $48 million.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherman, or Mayor Pro Tem. We appreciate that. And then, we've got the Priority Funding Plan. And I, you know, there is potentially some good news here in the funding plan, and I'm not going to get, go deeply into it tonight, but there are a number of funding strategies. And if we were to look at just funding priorities 1A and 1B, those total approximately 20, let's see, what do they total?
17, 8.
Oh, shucks. Well, Priority 1A's total, $11,530, and Priority 1B's, $6,300. And so, if we were able to capture the different types of funding possibilities that there are, that are available, like a levy, lid lift, some, a sustainable amount of real estate excise tax and MCI money, some impact fees that we're anticipating, and then, a whole slew of grants and some potential other voted issues, like for the pool and/or for an activity center expansion in the future, we can fund all of the 1As and Bs within the next decade. It would be in a very aggressive funding plan, but it could be done. And then, Section 5. And Section 5 is the section that is included as Chapter 6 of the Comprehensive, of the Des Moines Comprehensive Plan, and it's Chapter 6, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Element. And so, you, when you look in this chapter, you will notice that we've left all of the tracking in, so that you can see all of the proposed changes from 2003. And this is what is going to be discussed with the planning agency on July 13th.
So with the, you know, we just had a PS and T committee meeting discussing impact fees, and those will be coming before you. I saw in the Futures, we're gonna, it's gonna be coming before us for, for those. So when are you going to be putting together discussion of Parks and Rec impact fees?
As soon as we can. Yeah. It's not part of this process. Originally, I'd hoped to have it, but when we implemented the planning process last year, we weren't anticipating all of the budget cuts and the struggles, and it's just, we just weren't able to get it done.
And I would imagine that those will be determined or evaluated, just like the transportation fees, having to do with-
Oh, yeah.
-what's the total capital needs.
Yes.
What percentage of that is represented by growth? What percentage of that is catch-up for what we need to do for our current population?
That is the concept, yes.
Yeah. We have to do a very thorough analysis of all of our resources and the values of them to establish the baseline, and then, we go from there. It's a lot of work that has to be done, and I'm working with Jason Sullivan on that, that there's just, it's, I'm not sure if it'll get done, how soon it'll get done. Then, I also want to draw your attention to the final, one of, not the final, but the appendix, Appendix A. And I didn't print out Appendix A, but you do have an overview of all of the projects. And you'll see, there's some, it looks like code. If you look at the Park Improvement Project Summary, there's a PLAP, IPLAP, FRPP, anyway, those-
MOUSE.
MOUSE. Yeah, those correspond with the, the tables in Section 3, and those, those mean, you know, the parkland acquisition plan. So if you see Table 3-1, that list corresponds with 3-1, 3-2, and so on, so that you're not left in the dark when you're looking at that. And then, the assessment and cost estimates is a real thick piece of work. So there's a, there is a CD in your binder. If you'd like a printed copy, let me know, but I didn't know how deep you wanted to delve into those issues.
Susan, did you have a question?
No.
There was one, one- Just one thing I perused in here, it just stood out. Well, first of all, I want to say, I can't believe you guys did all this in a year. I mean, with us, it would have been at least four, not just. But anyway, thank you for all your hard work that you did. This is very impressive, Patrice. I think you guys have done a phenomenal amount of work on this. But the one question I have, there was something in here about combining parking in Wooton Park with businesses or Highline Community College, and is that something that we would, was just-
That's just a concept. It's been discussed.
Okay.
We're looking at, you know, land acquisition in that area. There are some opportunities for land, and that would be a council's choice.
Right, okay.
Where you want to go with that.
All right.
Where we are today, just briefly, we've got 170 acres of land. 79 of those are recreation-oriented. We have 126 of those are acres that are available for recreation uses, and the goal in the city, if we were to meet the 8.5 acres per thousand, would be 294 acres. Again-
Can we talk about that for a minute? So, does that have the school acreage in it, or not?
No, it doesn't have school acreage in it. There is an assessment of school acreage, but the school acres that are, that we are connected with, that we have an agreement regarding, other than Zenith, are about nine acres worth of facilities. And that's not included in there, but it could be. So that'll be a discussion point.
But as I remember what we did when- But as I remember what we did when we first structured this, the school acreage provides substantial opportunities that are recreation-based. You know, there's the playgrounds, there's gyms, there's the stuff and the other. And part of what happens when you go to set the impact fee, you can only set it based on what your current standard is. And if, if you say we only have 126 acres out of a needed 294, you're not going to be able to go anywhere with an impact fee. Because that would say that the existing residents are 170 acres short. And you need to get the local funding for this 170 acres, you know, in proportion to your impact fee.
Well, the 126-
And that was where the school acreage, which we all use for recreation, you know, gets that number much higher, showing a much smaller shortage. So what I'm saying is in the impact fees analysis, we would have to significantly reduce our standard to four acres or three acres per thousand and not show that we're 170 acres short. So this needs to be looked at with the impact fee issues in mind-
Right.
-to know how to deal with that.
Right. And we will. The 88 acres from Saltwater State Park aren't included in that. So if you include that, that brings it up to 200 and-
Fourteen.
What? Brings it up. And then what is included there are the nine actual acres that we have somewhat control over at the schools. One of the issues regarding the school acres, and I'm glad you brought it up. That was a history lesson that I, must have happened before my time. But there, part of the problem with the school acres is we have found that they are not necessarily readily available. I mean, they're not available all the time. They have to be scheduled, and you pay a fee. And they're used by the school district. You know, school facilities are a priority for school use. And so, you know, that's, that is part of the issue, except for those acres that we have an interlocal agreement for the use of. Similar, when we built the, the facilities at Olympic Elementary School and Midway Elementary School and, and Woodmont Park, or Woodmont Elementary School, and the track now at Mount Rainier, we have a right to utilize those facilities through an interlocal agreement. And so those definitely count as resources. And we can do some more work. Robert Hoyman was on our committee. And he can provide us probably some more finite information about the actual acres of the school that could be used for recreation.
The other scene, thing that seems potentially missing, as I quickly thumbed through it, is open space. And, you know, in many subdivisions, we're setting aside wetland areas. You know, even though it's, some of it's public, some of it's private, but those spaces aren't showing. But yet, they are meeting a, a open space need. And open space is indeed part of the park and recreation plan.
Well, the conservancy parks are included in this master plan. It's called conservancy.
The parks are, but not-
The open spaces are too.
It's, no. As an example, the duplex project across the street from the Highline College on 20th. There's a huge wetland that was protected in there.
Oh.
We don't own it.
Right.
But it's open space that meets open space requirements. And this is a parks and open space plan is what, you know, viewing the forest is as much as, you know, you don't have to stand in the forest to use the forest or appreciate it. So it seems to me that those sorts of facilities also need to be documented. I noticed in one of your headings, you'd had public and private parks, and the only thing listed was Saltwater. And I started thinking, well, there's a whole lot more that should be listed on that page. For example, the Woodmont Beach Club.
It is on the list. It's in a different location.
Okay. I would have thought it would have been under the private, but, so those sort of resources, I think, need to be researched and documented that they exist. And there again, that will enter into how we deal with impact fees.
However, those facilities are not, they're, they're private property. They're, they're not open to the public.
But they meet recreation needs.
Well-
Part of our standards that we deal with is recreation requirements on multifamily projects. So a tennis court in a multifamily project needs to be considered that it's a tennis court meeting some needs.
Well, that begs two questions. The first one I wanted to ask about was the 8.5 acre standard per thousand. Where did that come from?
The four acre standard for recreation?
Eight point five acres per thousand. Where did that come from?
It came from the Des Moines Comprehensive Plan, planning from the 80s.
Earlier.
Early, a long time ago.
Okay.
It has been Des Moines standard for as lo, as, I don't know how, a long time.
Right.
In every plan I've seen.
And then speaking along the, the issue of open space, one of the areas of open space, because it, in part because it hasn't been developed, and in part because it may be better left as is, or at least with trails or something. Woodmont Park, you know, some of the, some of those wooded areas where instead of it becoming open or active recreation, it's more, well, I don't know if I would call it passive recreation, some of those. And I guess I'm interested to see, you know, as we go through this, the identification of the differences between the active versus the, again, I don't, I don't like using passive because-
A lot of that information-
Why do you think that isn't necessarily passive? But, but it's not, you know, it's not open for kicking a ball around or something, but-
A lot of that information is located in the chapter five. So you'll see a standard, and you'll see a listing of each of the resources and the category that, that we put them in. And you might choose to want, to move things around. But based on what their current status is, they were put in a category.
And then my only other question is, it's, and only because it's a big-ticket item, I noticed that Zenith was on here as an interlocal, an IPLAF. And I guess I was somewhat surprised by that, only because the, a dollar figure attached to something that we're currently accessing via an interlocal agreement. I, I didn't understand why there would be money tied to something that we already have an interlocal agreement.
Well, the intent would be to either acquire that site or to replace it if, if the school district develops it. So it's just information to say, this is how much it would cost us to replace this facility.
Okay.
That's essentially what that is.
Okay.
Let me stop for a second here. Scott, I don't know if you really got any other questions or not.
If we do go to a parks impact fee, how we treat a lot of these issues drives the shortfall of the public funding and the private funding that can be used then to generate the impact fee. So all these things are at issue in terms of coming up with the impact fee and defending our recreation requirements for private property or, or subdivisions. So it's important to be, because if you have a standard that you can never achieve, GMA would tell you, you need to rewrite your standard. Just like in our transportation plan, we had to balance level of service-
Right.
-with our funding plan to get a balance. So if our level of service for parks is eight and a half acres per thousand, and we can never achieve it, it's not a valid standard, and we need to revise the standard.
Yeah.
And as I say, the standard was written by counting school acreage and a whole bunch of other things that then added up that you weren't very far off from that acreage requirement.
Well, actually, I'm trying to recall the last one. We've always been pretty far off. And when, when we, if you add in the city of Des Moines acres, plus interlocal, plus Washington State, right now, we get to 257 acres of the 294 required. So, I mean, we are pretty darn close.
Right. But, but the farther off you are, the harder setting up the impact fee is. And we never worried about it because we were never setting up an impact fee.
We'll have to review how the impact fees are established and what's taken into. There's, there's quite a-
So as an example, if, if we require 300 acres for the 30,000 people we have, just in terms of round numbers, and we're going to get 10,000 more people through growth, you can only justify an impact fee that's equivalent to those 10,000 people. If you're short for the 30,000, you have to come up with that with city funds. And if you don't fund it with city funds to get that, then you have to change the standard to be what it is that you have, and then that affects what your impact fee is.
Got it.
Is that a, a fair characterization of the, okay?
You need a new parks LOS.
Well, as I say, once you go to an impact fee, your level of service has to be related to what, what you have for your existing people.
One more question. One more question I had, I'm sorry. We, we approved a number of planned unit developments and other projects during the course of this last year and a half.
Correct.
Has that acre, was that acreage added into the figures that we had?
Not yet. And in section one, existing conditions, there is information that shows you what those projects are and what they would add to our, to our system. And they, right now, between Land Marquee, Park and Wetlands, Pacific Heights Park, Crestwood Park, we have about eight acres that will be added. So that'll boost it up a little bit more.
I was curious, so, yeah, thanks.
And those are also identified as projects to be done by developers in tables one through, one, 3-1 through 7. So we've tried to cross-reference everything that we could possibly put in here. So just to give you-
Oh, you see, is-
Well, I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments as to when this came in front of the municipal facilities committee. The Sanju Park was, there was some discussion as to whether or not it was originally planned as a park or whether we had made any particular plans about what to do with it. And it was the first time that I ever heard that it has apparently a viable orchard, which is not an old, worn-out orchard on it, as well as some wetlands. The City of University Place was given an orchard, which they have turned into a city park where they take school classes in the spring to teach them things about why blossoms are there and how they become fruit. And, and they have people adopt a tree, and they're, they arrange to have pruning sessions, again, as a teaching experience. And then in the fall, they have apple cider, a festival. So sometimes you have a piece of land that wasn't originally intended as park land that becomes an opportunity. And I don't know that there has been a study as to what we might be able to build out of that opportunity. Another thing that I, I felt was that there was some, there would have been some value, I think, if the committee that had been ranking everything might have had a conversation with the council or been aware of some of the council's concerns of our ability to afford to take care of little parks in, in new subdivisions. And I heard a comment from some of them that they might have ranked some things differently if they'd been a little bit more aware of some of our discussions. So I, I think it's a, a process that we shouldn't always just build off of what's always been on the books. Sometimes there are new elements to add that aren't there to start with.
Yeah. Just, just to respond to that, I think our committee was very aware of your interest in not building small parks.
Oh, I, I-
Maybe the comment was made, but I, I might have been erroneous. I think that most of the planning was done based on the knowledge that we have to look at larger facilities serving more population and our inability to maintain lots of small, little parcels.
Okay.
Okay. So there's quite a few issues and trends that are facing our parks and recreation system. One of them is that we've just had some outstanding growth over the past few years. We have lots of people that want to participate in programs. We're busting at the seams. And there are limited dollars to pay for those or subsidize them. So we have turned to fee-supported revenue recovery types of programs. And of course, the issue there is our low-income citizens. It does have an impact on those folks. Our recreation resource distribution, as the committee, as John pointed out earlier, we have lots of, our larger parks are mostly in the north end of this town, and there isn't much in the way of recreation resources in the south end of the park, of the town. A lot of that has to do with the way that the city developed and annexed, et cetera. But that is an issue. We have an aging and deteriorating park system that has a lot of needs, a lot of repair and, and replacement needs. And that really impacts our ability to market our resources, to fill them, and to make sure that those facilities are safe for the public. And resources shortages is obviously a big one that everyone is facing. There's a lack of resources to be able to pay for all those needs that we have. And so somehow, we hope to find a way within this planning process over the next decade to find some sustainable ways to take care of our resources. We did look at 10 neighborhood planning areas, and you're probably well aware of those. They're, everything from North Hill down to Redondo. We did find that in only two of our neighbor, only two of our neighborhoods had a, were above the standard as far as park acres required. Most of our neighborhoods were well below. However, when you take into consideration, say, Saltwater State Park being in the, kind of in-between Zenith and Woodmont West, that helps to add some park acreage in those areas. And then if we do look at the school facilities and what resources they do have, and add those back in in some manner, that will help supplement some of the areas like North Hill and Woodmont East. So there are some ways that we can supplement those. But as you can see, we, if you look at the below or after, below or above standard, you can see that we're, there's some areas that are significantly below what the standard would be. I'd like to introduce now Susan Black, and she's going to give you a quick overview of the park assessment process.
And thank you for using the term "quick" because we are running way behind today, so.
Very quick. Well, if we give our role, I was just really going to give a summary of our role. We, we were asked, we've done a number of these plans, both originally, original plans, Bellevue, Redmond, Bury, and others. We're now in this cycle of updates, which is, which is, involves taking a plan that was produced in, in 2003 in this case, and finding out what wasn't done, what is to be done, what now needs to be done, and what about it, and approximately how much it's going to cost. So based on our experience, we, we both build parks and playgrounds and plan them. So we have some pretty good cost estimates that are at least current in today's kind of world. So our role was first inventory of existing parks and their conditions and the facilities. We did then an assessment of those. We, including crawling around and trying to understand what really, even hidden things, and looking at trees, what are the problems here. Then we prepared lists of things that we realized were needed, asked the committee to go out, divided up the parks for the committee. Committee went out and looked at the parks too. We took their list. We basically then proceeded to take a plan of each park and draw on that plan improvements that we, we, that were identified by us and by the committee. Then we produced two sheets, I believe they're in appendix. Then we produced two sheets, I believe they're in Appendix A, for each park. Actually, there were other sheets, too, but, but each park has an existing park description, previous plan accomplishments, what got done, and then proposed park improvements, and a plan, a hand-drawn plan with notes about what should be part of the future improvements for that particular site. The list...
Is that on the CD?
It's on the CD, yes, and so...
This is all the work that you did?
Yes.
Okay.
We did this work. And then, and, and then, so then, but then a key piece of our work was to try to understand the cost implications of those improvements. Now, because there are in case, in these cases, no designs, right? We have land acquisition, which we can guess the cost of. Since there are in many cases no designs, that we're talking a planning-level cost estimate. So, it's, so, we round up, generally speaking. We try not to get too high. We, we compare it with other planning work we've done. We compare it with new bid tablets we've just opened for things and identified, I'd say, kind of generally, we identified key, kind of round numbers for key pieces. For example, a nice playground, how much is that going to cost you? So, we put a number on that. So, that's exactly where those cost estimates that you see over and over, and that have the implications that you're going to deal with, come from, which are planning-level cost estimates for the purposes of, of setting some goals and for turning around and understanding with RCO and other granting agencies what might be required to get a good job done, when the time comes, if the time comes. Finally, there's a maintenance question. This is my last point. We sat down with maintenance to understand what their, what their process was, how that compared to other processes, how, how that might have changed since 2003, and then what that, what the implications of the new proposed improvements to a place might mean to that implication, to, to that maintenance budget. So, that's our role, and we, and we enjoyed doing it and enjoyed working with Patrice Tremendous.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, if you want a copy of all the plans, we'll, we can produce one for you. It's a rather thick piece of, it'll create a big binder for you. We, the committee did look at different priorities. Priority 1 were projects that are currently underway or anticipated, urgent, urgent, urgent needs that they saw. A priority 2 are still, you know, obviously, needs in the community, but have a little bit longer timeframe. They're not as urgent, they're not necessarily one-time opportunities. And then priority 3s are, might happen when a priority 1 or 2 happens. If it's a phased project, maybe Phase 1 happens first, and then Phase 2 is Priority 3 on the listing there. So, you'll see some things like that. You will see some of those smaller parks as lower priority, in some cases as higher, as more, higher use, higher visibility facilities.
What's the distinction between 1A and 1B, then?
Well, 1A and 1B, we had so many high 1 priorities that we divided them up just purely for, you know, 1A was a little bit more important than a 1B, and if we only had so much money, we would go after the 1As before the 1Bs, if, with all things being equal.
So, it was a prioritization within, within Priority 1?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
What did you use, what did you use as a threshold to decide between the two categories?
The threshold? Well, it was basically...
Was it urgency versus just something you thought was very important, or...
It was urgency and/or what we, what they really thought might happen. For instance, Midway Park. Midway Park is a 1A because we're anticipating that there might be light rail development in that area, and also some more high-density development. And so, that area is going to be a real high priority. And we also anticipate there might be some matching funds or developer fees that might be able to go into it. So, those types of things were looked at when we re-prioritized between 1As and 1Bs.
Okay.
And also, a 1A would be if there was absolutely nothing available in that area, and it was a real high priority because we needed to provide a, a balanced distribution of facilities.
Or if it's in process.
Or if it's in process, yeah, yeah.
All that.
Yeah, all the 1As are in process.
Okay.
Capital Policy Recommendations. Sustainability is a big issue. We really need sustainability for our, our projects, and so, we're hoping that there will be a dedicated amount of real estate excise tax that can be used for the Priority 1 projects. To support the completion and renovation and replacement of vital community parks, this is where Carmen's input is, was taken, was heated, very strongly, her council's input regarding renovating and replacing facilities that are currently in existence. Those are the top priorities for us, and those need to be completed, renovated, and maintained properly. We have some real opportunities to connect with other neighborhoods and communities via the Lake De Sound Trail System and other options that are, may be on the horizon, like if the city is able to acquire the Barnes Creek SR 509 right-of-way property, if it's decommissioned by the state and, and they are willing to transfer it to the city. That's a real opportunity for us, and we really want to support that. To complete those connections that connect the community, the neighborhoods, the business areas, schools, parks, facilities, and transportation systems, that's really important. And we also saw that type of a theme in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan as well. Seeking joint use, shared costs wherever humanly possible. That is kind of the mantra in Parks and Recreation. We always are going to be looking for opportunities to collaborate and make more out of less. Support pedestrian-friendly and economically vibrant community experiences. This is really important, that we let people know, you know, provide a sense of place, they have arrived, they know how to get to our recreation resources, and, and, and our facilities are well-maintained. And then we are also supporting implementation of the many plans that have been developed in the city, inclusive of Marina Storefront Studio, Beach Park, Saltwater State Park, and to capitalize on the best things in our recreation resources.
On that one paragraph, I'm going to... The storefront studio isn't an adopted plan. It was a college exercise. And we've said there's some things in it we like, but, but in no way should it be held out as though that's an adopted goal or anything.
Okay. Well, this wasn't, doesn't say it's, it says implementation of...
Well, it says support implementation of storefront studio, and we haven't said that that should be done.
Okay. We can remove that. Master Plan Capital Project Recommendations, Priority 1. There's a lot of projects, and I'm going to show you a few maps right now quickly. We have Priority 1 projects, a number of them are by developers, so that's a good thing. We know that the acquisition, or we hope the acquisition will be, will happen. We've got Crestview Park down here in the Redondo area, Land Marquee in, in Woodmont East, and we have Pacific Heights in Redondo. By the city, we have, as our Priority 1, Midway Park Expansion. This is, the, the intent of South Des Moines Park would be to replace Zenith Park, and it would be located in south of Des Moines, potentially. And then there's a Woodmont Park Expansion, and that would be to expand the park with, there's a couple of hu, large parcels of conservancy property that might be able to be transferred to the city. Renovation and repairs, the Priority 1 projects, the expansion of Des Moines Activity Center, the Des Moines Beach Park Project, the Des Moines Memorial has a few little elements that need to be completed. Wooton Park has some elements that need to be completed, and then interlocally, the Mount Rainier Pool. New development, again, those same parks that are being developed by developers, Crestview Park, Land Marquee, and Pacific Heights, and then, again, Activity Center Expansion, the Des Moines Creek Trail, and that's underway, but there's also some potential for some additional connections with King County funds. And then we have Stephen J. Underwood Memorial Park, and then, again, Wooton Park Development. And development means, in most cases, development of the expansion of that facility, or completing the facility, other than, completing it other than renovating what currently exists.
There was a, I forget the source of it, but there was a, a trail, and I wasn't, I'm not sure if it was a bike trail or not, that was proposed in the Redondo area, and I can't remember if that was off of Federal Ways Plan, or...
Yes.
Or King County had shown it...
Yeah.
Somewhere. Has the tie-in through or into Des Moines, is that somewhere on these lists?
It's not on the list, but we're aware of it. It's on the Trails map, and it's basically down here, this map might not show it very well, but off, you know, at the south end of the boardwalk, there, right at the tip of Des Moines in Redondo, there's a creek called Redondo Creek.
Right.
And it potentially winds up, if, if they can acquire the land or the easement to get there, winds up towards the Metropolitan Market, you know, leading up towards a Federal Way, with a potential connection there with one of their, not the Interurban Trail, but it's a...
BLM?
Huh?
Bureau Land Management Trail, BLM?
No.
Power lines?
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a train. It's a train, train trail. I'm sorry. It's escaping me right now.
What, inner, like down the valley to the interurban, you mean, or...
No, 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 no. It's, it's, they've got a rail, they've got a, they've got either, they've got a, either power lines, or they've got a...
That's the one I'm talking about. It's a BLM.
B and L?
BLM.
BLM. So, you know, and then, of course, Federal Way has a trail system, but it's always a good idea to connect up with as many other facilities as you can.
Right, but I was, if it's just going to dump out at Redondo, I, you know...
It's in their long-range plan.
Okay.
They've got, they're not even...
I just, I just wondered if we were, if we had looked at that, because I've seen it on other maps, at least in the Federal Way portion, and it's like, oh, okay, so you want to come into Des Moines, but...
So far, it's just a, it's a concept.
Okay.
And there's a lot of land acquisition issues.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and that's, the map is in Section 1.
Okay.
Okay, so, just to point out again, that there's, that we have some...
Can I interrupt you for just a second here?
We're almost done.
How, how much more time are you going to need?
One minute.
One minute, you've got it.
Okay. One minute. We've already seen some of these charts. We've, Mayor Pro Tem Dan Sherman mentioned this before, so you're already aware of where the planning, the plan funding projects lists are. And so, basically, now we're to the next steps. SEPA checklist was submitted to our plan, our SEPA official. Tonight's presentation is the transmittal of the plan to council. July 13th, we have a planning agency public hearing. We hope to have a planning, a public hearing in front of council in September or early fall, and in time to be included in the updates to the 2009 Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
Thank you.
Mike?
My only other question is, as with our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, are there any code changes or regulatory changes necessary to effectuate anything in the plan that would be required?
No, there aren't any changes.
What's that?
The impact fees are part of this master plan. The impact fees are identified as funding, we did the processes in this plan to feed into a impact fee process, but there, there is nothing in this plan...
There's no, there's no change, changes to use, or, so, no zoning changes?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Scott?
I, I do think that an outcome of this should be the intended moving forward with impact fees. That needs to be part of our goal.
Yes.
And/or rewriting our subdivision and multifamily and business park criteria, because right now, administration doesn't exactly follow what the code says because they're curious about its enforceability or something. So, I would say we're not done with this process until we accomplish that. I mean, that's, that should be an outcome that is part of this. We don't want to just adopt the plan and then never get to impact fees, so...
Well, the intent, the, we definitely intend to get to impact fees, but we have been struggling this year as far as getting the work done. I think we did, the committee did an amazing amount of work.
But you can't get to impact fees until you've gotten through the Comprehensive Plan process.
Right.
But what I, but it's iterative. You can't, if you get to the impact fee and you have to go back and readopt the parks plan because you need to change the standard...
But they can come...
But, but we need to start the work on the impact fee now so that they come together balanced.
Right.
So, the other question I have, just like I have the transportation plan, is what is the effect of the notebook? We know inside the notebook are policies that would go in our comprehensive plan. But, the thing you put on disc that you handed out at the committee of all these park plans, and we've never, as a council, sat down and looked at each one and said, changes do that, and certainly when the fieldhouse improvements were coming forward, you know, it may have been thought by some, well, here's an approved plan, and we're just saying, well, no, that's just a con, concept and isn't an approved plan. So, I think we need to agree and document what are those pictures of the different parks? You know, are they an adopted plan? Is it a concept? You know, when does it become something more than, than, you know, a, a hope or a wish?
Yeah.
So, we need to make that clear so that when we adopt this plan, we know what that appendix is all about, and we know, you know, I don't think there's regulations in this like there were in the transportation plan that were intended to be. But we need to be clear about that so that when we adopt it, we know what we've done.
Well, the intent of this plan, and, and let me tell you, this is a management tool, is what it is. I know that there are requirements, regulatory requirements, that we have a plan, but from my perspective, when I'm planning for trying to put together cost estimates together, or designs together, or to get bids, or get, get ideas, it's a planning-level concept design that you're looking at. This isn't a master plan level or a buildable level concept plan that you're seeing in here. These are just suggestions. They're, 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 they show you what's currently on the ground now, and it shows you what the community has asked for as far as elements to be added to it, which, of course, the council can pick and choose from based on our funding capabilities. So, it really is basically a very heavily-used, by me, planning document and management tool. So, that's essentially what it is.
Thank you, Patrice, but you definitely don't get to go away.
Okay.
But I do want to thank everyone out there for all the hard work they did. I can't begin to tell you how much we appreciate it. Did you, did you want to say something? Yeah, I saw your hand.
No, I was going to say, yeah.
Oh, okay. You're a green, I assume.
And we definitely hear your comments. Thank you very much. We'll definitely incorporate your comments into the plan.
Great. Council, we have three more agenda items, two of which are action items, so I'd like to jump into those first, if you don't mind. The police chief is probably asleep behind us. Did I say that?
No, I didn't.
Let me, let me go see if he's available.
He's, he's there. Doesn't have to talk about maintenance and operating costs for these parks.
He looked like he was going.
How much more we can support, or not support, or how we're going to fund it. Doesn't have to talk about small parks and play equipment. I mean, those are issues that...
Okay, the next thing we'll jump into is Draft Ordinance Number 09-100, amending the crime-free fee, and...
I didn't hear him.
If you'll be brief, we... If you'll be brief, we promise to act quickly.
It's amending the crime-free rental housing program.
Okay, thank you. Roger.
The proposed change to the ordinance covers Section 5.64.050, grounds for denial of business license for crime-free housing. And it is our recommendation that this entire section be removed, and that we rely upon other sections of the ordinance to, for the enforcement power that we need.
Counsel? Susan?
I'm going to make a motion. I move to suspend Rule 26B in order to enact draft ordinance number 09-100 on the first reading.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
And I will move to enact draft ordinance number 09-100, repealing DMMC 5.64.050.
Second. Discussion? Dan?
Yeah, this ordinance, this ordinance is going to repeal the sections of the crime-free rental housing ordinance that specifies that certain persons who've been convicted of misdemeanors, felonies, or other such crimes related to, specifically related to rental housing, are not able to function as employees in rental housing for periods of time, depending on the crime, from, it looks like, one to five years. I personally don't see anything wrong with that. I know there are many instances of people who may commit a crime or misdemeanor, felony, in a particular field, and then they are prevented from functioning in a certain aspects of that field. I mean, it even happens with physicians. I was talking with the police chief about this, that physicians who are convicted of certain misdemeanors, for example, may not be able to perform specifically in face-to-face patient-related tasks, but could function using their medical license in record review tasks. And so, I don't think there's anything wrong with those laws, so I will not be supporting repeal of that portion of the ordinance. I think it's a good portion.
Any other discussion, Dave?
Yeah, while I understand Dan's concerns and share them to a certain degree, the fact that a lot of this falls within the soda and soap areas means that if as a condition of their convictions, they're told to stay out of those areas, it could be argued that they would still be subject to those two ordinances in the area of drug crimes and prostitution. So, for that reason, I feel a little bit more flexibility, even with the repeal of this, that we were still able to go after problem, if, if there are problems there.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? Nay. All right. Ordinance number 09-100 is an ordinance of the City of Des Moines, Washington, relating to the licensing of rental housing and to crime-free housing endorsement requirements in the City of Des Moines, and repealing DMMC 5.64.050. Let's move on to the fieldhouse ballpark. That brings Patrice back to us.
Yes, Your Honor, City Council. This item is back before you tonight, because we found in our excitement to initiate a new building plans process, that an advertisement was overlooked. And therefore, we are unable to award the bids, and need to reject all bids, and we rebid the project.
Dave?
I move to rescind the award of bid for construction of the Des Moines Field House Ball Field Number One Expansion Project to Garrett Construction Company, Inc., on the basis of irregularities related to state bid laws.
Second. Discussion? Okay, so Scott first, and then Dan.
Was this bid as a small works project on the small works project list? Or was it bid as a major capital project? And we were just using a service for the advertisement?
It was bid as a public works project, but Builders Exchange is a new process that the city is using now for public works projects. It was advertised with Builders Exchange and with MRSC, but...
Correct me if I'm wrong, it was too large of a project to be small work.
It is too large to be small work yet.
Would have been eligible to be a small works here in a few weeks, because the amount that state law allows us to do small works on is being raised.
So, as we use these contractor advertising services, are not their advertisements, how do their advertisements relate to cover our, our advertising requirement?
Well, the RCW requires that we actually put a notice in a newspaper where bidders would be looking for this type of work. So, you can't advertise online. You have to actually still advertise in a, in a newspaper, like Journal of Commerce.
I don't, I think it, we could make the Des Moines News our official paper. It doesn't...
Well, that's correct.
... Journal of Commerce.
Well, it, it says your official newspaper, or a newspaper that would likely draw contractors.
But in addition, I mean, logically, we should be advertising it in a periodical that people who would likely be looking for this kind of work would read. The Des Moines News, I don't think, would be the type that they would be looking at. However, I think the real bottom line here is that some advertising that was supposed to have done was not done.
Okay, and my, in our contracting with these service agencies, is that their duty or ours?
Well, I believe it's still our duty.
Okay.
I'm unclear. It is our duty, yes.
Okay, so, we actually awarded it last week.
Yes, we did.
And I don't, and my impression is that you haven't signed the con, the contract.
Oh, no.
Hasn't been signed.
No, we found, we found the error last, actually at the council meeting last week.
So... Does the contractor have a basis to file a claim against us for damages?
Were you bid?
I don't believe so. He can't make a claim based on the fact that he's entitled to the benefit of the bidding irregularities. So, that, but that's why the motion is separate. We need to rescind the council action, reject all the balance of the bids, and then send it back out.
Okay. Pardon me wonders. What if we just went ahead and awarded it? We liked the price. We got good bids. We got several bids. Maybe not everybody saw it. Are, is there contractors lining up to sue us, or would it just be an auditor's finding?
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Or would it be?
Auditor's finding.
What would be the downside with just moving forward?
Well, number one, would be a significant auditor's finding. And, and I think we're all sensitive to the fact the auditors are looking for contract irregularities at this point. So, that was one of the reasons it came to our attention. And, and again, you're not entitled to the benefit of a, of a bid that was not done appropriately. Even though we liked the price, if, if we had advertised it correctly, there might be a price we liked better. Now, does that mean any of those people, other than the first bidder, have any sort of right to the contract? Probably, well, not, they don't, under, I want to say, peer list, but they don't have a cause of action. But we have an obligation to do it correctly.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Move the question. Well, actually, you probably don't have to. It doesn't look like there's any other discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hey, unanimous.
I move to reject all bids for the construction of the Des Moines Field House Ball Field Number One Expansion Project.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. That also is unanimous.
I move to authorize the city manager to rebid the Des Moines Field House Ball Field Number One Expansion Project appropriately, with the inclusion of specifications for Ball Field Number One backstop netting.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Scott?
We talked about this last week as being too much to be a change order. Was there ball field fencing at all in the original contract?
Yes, there is fencing in the original contract.
Okay, so this is just in...
Not just fencing, but there is fencing, yes.
Okay, so this is an expansion of a piece of work that...
And it'll be bid, so it's an additive-type bid, so if it makes the project to expand, so we...
Those were the things I wanted to make sure that...
Definitely as an alternate.
Okay, with that understanding, I'm okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. That's unanimous also. Thank you.
One last item.
Gee, Patrice. You're on again. Next item is Mount Rainier Pool. This will just be a briefing and direction. Oh, Susan? All right.
Good evening, Council. Susan Mahoney, Assistant City Attorney. We have here just for discussion, the interlocal language that has been proposed by Mount Rainier School District with regard to what they are willing to enter into.
Which school district?
Highline School.
Did I say Highline?
No, you said Mount Rainier School District.
Wow. Thank you, Councilmember. With the Highline School District regarding the Mount Rainier Pool, as you know, we do not own the pool, and therefore, in order to put this for Metropolitan Park District out to the ballot, we needed to have some sort of agreement from Highline School that they would be willing to cooperate with that effort, to the extent possible as far as agreeing to negotiate in good faith with the Metropolitan Park District, should that measure pass, with regard to leasing, renting, or otherwise acquiring to operate and manage the pool. And they have indicated their willingness to do that. This is the interlocal that they have proposed, and we just need to know from council whether or not you have particular issues with it or suggestions you would like me to take back to the school district. I would like to just, you know, make clear that while we will be entering into this interlocal with them, which is them basically saying to the City of Des Moines, "If you go out and put this on the ballot, we agree to negotiate in good faith," the City of Des Moines cannot bind the Metropolitan Park District, and this agreement will not ultimately bind the Metropolitan Park District and Highline as to what they determine.
Councilmembers, any questions or concerns? Want to voice, Scott?
So, I appreciate the fact that the school district went and put this together, but if it's not binding on the, the park district, and it's not necessarily binding on the school district, what does it actually accomplish?
What we wanted from the school district is their assurance that they would work cooperatively with us to give us a purpose for putting this on the ballot, and that they are agreeing that by Des Moines going out and doing this, and putting this issue out on the ballot, that they will agree to negotiate in good faith. I think that that could certainly be something that could be enforceable from our part to go back and say, "Look, you said if we went and did this, you'd negotiate with them." So, I think to the extent that we could, you know, encourage Highline School District to, excuse me, I'm sorry, to encourage Highline School District to, to cooperate with that effort, and to have some assurances, as much as we can, that they will try and make that pool available to the Metropolitan Park District. That's what this accomplishes.
Yes, David?
I, I was more interested in the, in the school district giving, assigning, selling for a dollar, whatever, the land, and not having...
I think that's not going to happen. Based upon our discussions with them, I don't think the school district is interested in selling the land at all. They are definitely willing to lease the pool back to the Metropolitan Park District. That was the direction we were given in the meeting.
They leased the land?
No, the pool.
No, this, this does not say that. It says that they will, that, that they will acquire title to the pool building, and that there will be a conveyance of the building by quitclaim deed.
The building, not the land.
Right, that's what I said.
I'm sorry.
But they're acquiring title to the building.
The building.
Yes.
Right.
But then it goes on to say that, that when the lease ends, they stop owning the building automatically. That, that seems odd.
It does seem odd, and again, we can go back and discuss these particular issues, but at the end of the day, it will be between, if, if this measure passes, it's ultimately between the Metropolitan Park District and that board and Highline School. We cannot negotiate on their behalf.
That's right. We can't negotiate on behalf of the park district.
Correct. And we cannot now bind Highline to any agreement for a future Metropolitan Park District. I mean, really, they will have to reach their own agreement. What Highline is trying to say here is, yes, we are willing to negotiate with them.
That, that presumes that this is the pool solution, that a new pool isn't getting built, too.
Correct, and we did attend a meeting with the Highline School District, and it is my understanding that they are aware that our ballot title could go either way. It is everyone's hope, of course, that they will be able to use the Mount Rainier Pool and make that the viable solution.
Well, the hope would be, was that it would make it clear for them to agree to terms that would further their, their own interests in terms of the, the facility and the land being in the ownership of the park district. But apparently, they're reserving their, their interests.
Okay. Ed?
You know, we've been struggling with this pool problem for the better part of a year.
Wondering that.
And probably, much longer than, than that. This creates a Metropolitan Pool District, which, if the voters approve, would have the authority to negotiate with the Highline School District to make this happen. It gets the city out of, out of, out of the middle of this, and frankly, I think it's a good idea.
Susan?
My, now, what's going to be my question, from a legal perspective? Is this okay for the city? Are you guys comfortable with this?
Well, again, as I said, what we were looking for from the school district is assurances that if we went to the effort of putting this on the ballot, that they would negotiate with the Metropolitan Park District to make this a potentially workable solution. I think this does say that.
Okay, I'm a little uncomfortable with it. I don't know why.
Okay, is there any direction that you would give us to take back to the school district to discuss? Basically, what their timeline is, is I will be emailing him back tonight, because he needs to get his recommendations to the school board tomorrow, so that it is ready for their, or, excuse me, on Tuesday the six, or Monday the sixth, so that it is ready for them to vote on by July 15th.
Just seems a little strange to me that since we don't own the land, and they're not willing to ever move in that direction, you know, I still don't see why we're putting this on the burden of, you know, the taxpayers. It doesn't make sense.
If, if council's uncomfortable with those sort of terms, and the school district is not willing to change them, then it's totally up to the council as to whether or not you put something on the ballot that may end up being completely and totally for, for naught.
Well, that's one, that's my concern, and it is a big concern for me.
But what this says is that the school district is willing to negotiate in good faith for a land lease with the Metropolitan Park District, let them take title to the pool for up to 20 years. And I want to comment on that, because I have attended numerous meetings, the latest with the city manager, and they are, they reiterated over and over and over again that is their intent. And I believe every word they said, too, that was very sincere. Can you, can you shed any light as to why they wouldn't want to turn over title to the land as well as the building?
Go ahead, Tony.
I can take a shot at it. Land is land, and you don't give it up if you don't have to. And if the pool building is simply renovated, and then, say, 15, 20 years from now, it's again in very bad shape, and the pool district decides to demolish the building, the school district still wants to own the land and possibly do something on their own with it, whatever that might be, and it'll be up to the park district, pool district, to figure out how to continue... And it'll be up to the park district, pool district, to figure out how to continue pool services and facilities in the city someplace else.
Correct.
Now, they could choose to sell the property to the pool district, but my guess is, is that they would ask for fair market value and by state law and constitution, they'd have, they'd be required to get fair market value for it or some sort of consideration from the district.
But there would be nothing in the agreement that would exempt them from being able to do that if they wished to.
One more thing.
You still have the floor.
Were, weren't we going to make this so it could be at another location? Did it have to be there? I thought we looked at that.
The ballot title is for a pool facility. Obviously, this is a pool facility that is already up and running and I believe that, you know, we took this, obviously, council has authorized that to give the Metropolitan Park District the options available if they were not able to come to good terms with the school district. But the reality is, is here you have a pool that is already there, is already being managed and is already running and I, you know, that's, that's likely the option of, of first resort for the Metropolitan Park District. Obviously, none of us can speak for who those folks will be.
All right, Dan?
Yes, so if we wanted to massage this, we should tell you now.
Correct.
And if not, this is what's going to go before the Highline School Board. And then the process is that will come back to us to endorse at that time.
July 23rd.
That is correct, yeah. Okay. And that this agreement, although it appears clear now that the school district does not want to sell the land, at least they've made a public statement of that and people who vote for the levy or for the park district will understand that because there's no secret about that.
How will they understand it, though? Will it be spelled out?
In any advertising that might be done? Maybe people actually watch our meetings?
If I could, the ballot title, as you can see, actually says pool facility. It actually doesn't say Mount Rainier Pool. And I have put in a proposed ballot title in case we got, had enough time to discuss some of those thoughts this evening as well.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my questions.
Scott, you're next, then Carmen.
We know that Des Moines can't bind the school district, Des Moines can't bind the park district, and I certainly wouldn't want to try and sue the school district for non-compliance with a promise to negotiate in good faith.
Right, I totally agree.
I don't think there needs to be an interlocal.
I agree.
It, it seems to me that the school district could issue a letter to the community or, or something that states their position on the record, what they intend to do, and that's just as much a statement as it would be if it were an interlocal agreement between us.
I totally agree with that. Yeah.
What's the benefit or the drawback, or, you know, what's the benefit to it being interlocal as opposed to a letter to the community where the school district makes the promise to behave in a certain way?
I totally agree with that.
All right, Carmen?
Well, no, but that's the question.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember, essentially, the, the interlocal is an expression of intent. It doesn't have authority to bind because, because just the issues that you've raised. I think we, and, and I think we've gone with this format because that's what they requested. And, and even the interlocal?
But they could give their statement of intent.
Yeah, I believe they could. And we're not sharing powers, so we, you know, even an interlocal may not be required. But I think that that's what they wanted.
Actually, based upon prior discussions we had, it's what we requested of the school district and that is what they presented. I suppose we could ask the school district simply to pass a resolution. It was to have at least some agreement that they would work with us cooperatively if we put this on the ballot, which was essentially the, I guess that would be the only arguable shared authority.
I think it would, a resolution on their behalf stating their intentions, I think would be a great thing. I don't know that having it be an interlocal agreement does anything more.
I, I would argue that it's somewhat like council can give direction or make policy by a motion. But if you want to be emphatic about it, you do it as a resolution. And if you want to give it the power of law, then you do it as an ordinance. So in this particular case, given the political sensitivity of this facility, given the people that have shown up, not tonight, but oftentimes, packing council chambers, I think some sort of emphatic policy statement by both the school district and the city that we are working together, and the school district is going to work with the park district if it is created by the voters, making that emphatic statement through an interlocal agreement will put to rest any complaint by anybody that the school district and the city are not trying to do something to deal with this issue. I agree with Councilmember Thomason that having the school district simply adopt a resolution might be good enough, but this also puts the city of Des Moines on the record saying we are going to put something on the ballot and we want to make sure that the school district is, is agreeing to play fair. So I don't think it gives you any additional legal leverage, but I think it gives you an awful lot of political leverage.
Okay, we have Carmen, Ed, Dave, and Susan.
I, I wanted to ask on the proposed ballot title, the 20 cents was supposed to cover not just operating it, but also repairing it and doing capital things to it over a long term?
We have a 75-word limit for the ballot title.
Okay.
So it was quite the puzzle to figure out how to get this into 75 words. You have, I believe, two words to play with, keeping in mind that Des Moines is considered to be two words.
Well, my, my concern is that it'll be quite important for the public to know what that 20 cents covers and I don't think they expect it just to cover operations.
The, in the explanatory statement that we can put out with the ballot title, we can go into a little bit more detail about that. We'll bring that back to council with suggestions when we get to the point where we are in a position to adopt a resolution and pass an ordinance, excuse me, to put this on the ballot. We're not able to do that at this point. We have to wait for the SEPA period to be done.
Okay. And what I, one, again, since we've got a couple of words that we could play with here, and I understand exactly what it is you're saying, I mean, for the purposes of, you could say refurbishing slash building slash operating a pool facility. If we could do something like that to get the couple of words in that you're talking about, we'll try to, but this has been the conundrum every time we've tried to put something together to go on the ballot. There are certain things you must say on the ballot. For example, we must say, what's the purpose of this ballot title? It's to create a Metropolitan Park District with boundaries coexisting with the city's limits. These are some things we have to say. We have to note the RCW that we're forming this under and it eats up valuable words that we would rather use to describe a little bit more fully on the ballot title, what it is we're trying to do. So understand your issue, we'll wordsmith a little bit and maybe we can squeeze a little bit more in.
Okay.
But it's also, just so you know, why I wasn't able to, and I know that council had originally given us direction to put 15 to 20 cents, but to explain that, they're just, we don't have enough words.
So I, I think that would weaken getting a strong response. I, I just felt that using only the word operating also weakens getting a stronger response.
I'll see what I can do with that.
The, the, I guess I don't have a sense of how much money that brings in over a period of time, but 10 years seems to be a short. I guess if, if we have no authority to bind the school district, it doesn't really matter if I try to wordsmith this, so I, I think I'll stop.
Okay. Ed?
Sit back and recognize what we've gone through. The city has, once the county turned the pool back, because the pool was located next door and because we had been contributing to the pool operation and maintenance, once it passed back to the school district, the school district has said, I can't maintain it. We have said, we can't maintain it. What this does is offer the citizens a chance to form a Metropolitan Pool District and the 20 cent fee, as I understand from early calculations, was based on the generating amount to operate it and maintain it for that period of time. Okay? So the school district said, I'm not going to give the land, but they'll, they'll give the same rights they gave the county to the Metropolitan Pool District, and the Metropolitan Pool District would have the taxing authority to raise the funds to operate and maintain the pool. It puts the issue of do you want to keep that pool going on the, on the hands of the voters, who are the people that should decide, not you, not me, them.
Dave?
So how do you really feel about it, Ed? We decided that issue a few weeks ago, but. It's an imperfect document, but what it does do is, if it were just a resolution passed by the, by the school board, the problem is that it's just a statement of intent. At least with an interlocal agreement, there's an accountability piece in the part of the city being able to hold the district or the school district accountable for fairly dealing with the pool district. And for that reason, I, you know, I would go with the interlocal. At least there's an accountability piece that's lacking if there's just a resolution.
Susan?
My feeling is that we've said this, I mean, if it's going to go out to the public for a vote, the school district can pass a resolution. I agree. I, to me, all this agreement is not necessary. And who knows, the commission may come up with another solution or another location and build a new pool. That's an option. I, I don't think, I think selling the public that this is the only, you know, solution or this is the best solution, it may not be. And I think that's going to be up to the park commission, the Metropolitan Park District, to decide. So I, I don't want to, I mean, I'm in favor if the school district wants to put something out with an intention or a letter to the community or a resolution, then that's fine. But I don't think this is necessary either.
All right, let me see if I can get consensus here. This is not a vote, just second, Ed. How many, just by a show of hands, are in favor of an interlocal with the school district? Okay, solidly a majority. And that's the direction we're going to have to give you.
I'm sorry, what was the direction?
5-3 ILA.
Okay. All right. Let me take a moment to say something, too. I, obviously, I support the ILA. I have a great deal of confidence in the school district and I've had a number of meetings, as I stated, with them to believe that they also believe that this is in the best interest of the citizens, too. I did read in, a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, in a local paper, that there was a person that felt that maybe we were doing this just to get rid of the pool. I just want to go on record as saying that this city council, and I'm going to support you all on this regardless of your position regarding an interlocal, have worked very, very hard and very, very diligently, taking a considerable amount of time in both committees and discussions at this day regarding that pool and always have been very, very supportive in one form or another of the people's request here. So I'm not criticizing the person that wrote it. Maybe that is their own opinion, of course, and everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but I just want to make sure that the public understands it. And that was never the case with this city council. I think I can speak for the school district and for the city of Normandy Park, that everyone has worked very, very, very hard to get something going so that that pool can be saved.
Ed?
A comment that Susan made in terms of, I don't know, the way this is written is general, but the 20 cents that is going to be collected barely generates, I mean, just about generates enough money to operate and maintain this pool.
It's about, just under $650,000 a year currently.
How much?
$650,000.
Also, I think the council needs to be applauded in giving the citizens the say on how this is going to be run, that the park, the pool district is going to be run by citizens and not by the city council. Okay, Steph, again, do you have directions? How to go?
You're not suggesting any changes. I'm going to go tell Mr. Green, take it to the school board. We had a couple of things.
With the understanding it will come back to us?
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
I do want to remind you, though, that the 15th is their last meeting, so if there are any changes, the school board would not have an opportunity to work on them prior to the deadline for the ballot. So this was our one opportunity.
I have one question, then.
All right, hi Carmen.
Oh, okay. The current agreement runs out at the end of this year, doesn't it?
Correct.
So if, if there want to be no lag in between, why does it say, why doesn't it say that it needs to be executed by January 1st of 2010 instead of June 1st? I mean, doesn't it need to be by January 1st if you want?
What I think they're saying is, is that if, if, that this is only binding on them in dealing with the Metropolitan Park District until a certain amount of time and if it doesn't happen, then that would be that.
Okay.
Scott, just a quick question after seeing several ballot titles get changed over time. Have we checked the wording of the ballot title with King County elections to see that they're happy with it?
Not yet, and I've been tinkering with it and I've got about five or six words out of it already. I'll have to talk to Susan, see what she thinks.
So I'm just curious whether the agreement should say a ballot title in the form of, or generally, you know, not have it attached to the ballot title?
No, I don't think we were intending to attach the ballot title to the interlocal.
Okay, okay.
These are two separate attachments.
Okay.
Just for discussion.
Right.
Was it clear?
Anyone else? All right, well, that concludes our meeting for the evening. We're a couple minutes early, so I would have to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
For the record, who would like to be the person that makes that motion?
Dave.
Okay, Dave makes it, Dan seconds it. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, our next meeting will be a regular meeting on July 9th. We are adjourned.